We go. Okay, so.
So I guess well, Maddie Larson will not be here today, so I guess I'll be standing in for chair. And we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Can I have somebody read the land?
Oh, sure. I will read it from off screen.
All right. We'd like to acknowledge we're on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of the native peoples who are still here today. Thank you.
And did everybody get a chance to look at the agenda today?
Yeah.
Yeah, and can I get a motion for an approval of tonight's adjournment?
I'm going to approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you, TJ. Thank you, Meredith. So the agenda is approved. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting? Any changes anybody recommend or?
I had one thing that I wanted to put on the record that Mitch and Alvaro has picked quite a couple of corrections in addition to our conversation of H25.
We all able to hear, Meredith. Melissa and Walter, could you hear?
I did.
Which page was the last one?
Um, page two.
Page eight.
Just that paragraph one.
Any other, any other changes? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
As amended.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
I think we all.
Oh. Also, all in favor?
Hi.
Perfect. Next, we'll move on to the report from council member voting for.
So let's see if there's anybody who wants to comment.
Oh, yeah.
And our next meeting may be a regular meeting day.
November eighth, okay.
Let's see.
Is that, that's not, is that election day?
So. No, that's the second Tuesday.
A motion to move it a week.
Or is everybody okay with the eighth or?
I would prefer if we moved it to the next week.
Okay, well, so I can do a poll just to make sure that Wednesday or Tuesday, just to make sure that for the next, for the following. So we have, we have just one attendee. And so now would be the time to use the raise the hand feature if Mike D, if you wanted to speak. Looks like Mr. D is content to listen at this point. So, so now we can get to the report.
Ah, okay. Thank you. Uh, I don't have much to say because I went on vacation and then I only, the first week I was back, there were no council or regional meetings that I attended. So the budget deliberations are consuming a lot of time. It's a pretty, I think I've talked about this before, it's a pretty austere budget because we have the impacts of inflation, but our property tax revenues can only go up in aggregate 1% per year. So, so this is the ironic thing that as you see these fancy houses getting built itself for 1.4, 1.5 million dollars, we still can only raise property taxes in aggregate 1%, right? So as we have higher overall assessed value, the levy rate goes down actually. So, so we are currently exploring because we see revenue shortfalls going out in the six-year forecast. We are tentatively, cautiously exploring the idea of taking, starting some kind of index to the C, some version of the CPI. So that's, but that would have to go to the vote of the people. So, but we, we are already losing police officers to jurisdictions who are willing to pay them more and give them bonuses as we negotiated a modest pay raise for them. Our project manager position in the public works department has gone unfilled with no applicants for three months. So we have a new HR director, luckily, who knew our previous HR director, and she's going to try some new techniques. But it is, we are a small city. Our salaries are going to be low and it looks, going into the future, it looks a little bit scary. One thing the council did encourage that has, is, is part of what is in the proposed budget now, or the adjunct to the proposed budget, is we wanted to make sure that our building permits and mechanical and plumbing permits, that all of those reflected our actual costs. We haven't updated them in five years. And so we actually did an audit of actual costs and also what other cities charge for those. And so I think we're in the low end of what other cities charge, but now we're, we're actually recovering more of our actual operating costs instead of subsidizing that. And so, and, and as our, as our permit inspector says, we can approve permits in, you know, two months or even for a new building. If we can approve something in two months, where Seattle's like a year. So I was, I was thinking, oh, is that why we have so many teardowns and buildings going up? You know, maybe we should slow it down a little, but don't put that in the. But anyway, those are some of the issues we're grappling with. We hope to have the budget adopted before Thanksgiving. And it will have some provisos in it if by chance revenues come in a little bit higher. It will have a list of some things that we'd like to do if the revenues come in, come in higher. We've done pretty well over the years because we have been just lucky to get grants at the right moment and the right time. And so things have kind of caught our way. But if you take those things out, the lucky breaks, and, and we go for those, right? So we're working at it, but it's not revenue you can, you can count on. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty streamlined budget and, you know, you guys can probably attest to that because you, you've been involved in it. So right now, the mayor has made a proposal and the council is deliberating on it. And the next step will be a version that the council supports and that goes to a public hearing, right? Public hearing. We've had very little public participation at this stage, very little attention to the budget. That's about it. You know, the, uh, the, we're keeping an eye on state legislation related to land use. And so there are certain number of unfunded mandates for, that are hard for cities like us, like climate change provisions, which you might be talking about and some other, the possibility of actually having affordable housing requirements that would be imposed on the city. So the smaller cities are, you know, raising the question, where, where's the funding going to come from? We're not Redmond, we're not Kirkland. We only, actually Mercer Island, which I think of as affluent, has the same issues we have. They are predominantly dependent on their property tax and their, and their rates for collecting a property tax account. So they're, they're actually looking at climate action plan and saying how to be conscious. So anyway, stay tuned for more. I know this is just all about money and not the environment. Oh, I know, I, I know what else I'll tell you. There's a lot more citizen involvement on the Sound Transit proposals as Sound Transit has started to talk to individual citizens about taking of their property along Bockel Way. And they are not very informative, collaborative, or transparent with us or with the citizens whose, even whose properties they're talking about taking. For example, a lady came in to comment in public at our last council meeting and Sound Transit has simply said, you know, we basically want to take your, she's along Bockel Way. We basically want to take your whole front yard or maybe your whole house. So, and, and this, you know, she's lived there for 45 years. And this is just like completely, it's not very collaborative. We also have a citizen who's an expert in large concrete structures. And so she has done some work on the retaining wall on the upland side, what that could look like and what we don't want it to look like. Sound Transit stripped down, you know, utilitarian version. I don't think anyone in the city wants it to look like that because it's the gateway to our city. Like, why do we want that? Some citizens have raised the fact that why are we doing this when ridership is down? Why are they still pursuing this? Why don't they postpone it? Because they're taking a lot of land on the upland side, which is going to be a huge excavation. You know, there's, there's a hillside there and they're still taking some on the, on the lakeside as well. So, so that's going on. Meanwhile, there's a creek I didn't know was there, which you probably have heard something about lately.
Can't pronounce it.
And we can't pronounce it. It's a Native American name, but it's where the Sheridan Market and that ravine and bridge are. And the state actually called, we, we have not called it the Fish Bearing Street, but apparently more recently, the state has designated it, at least potential Fish Bearing Street. And so, you know, there's, and that's a steep hillside. So what's going to happen with all the Sound Transit construction there? And then last but not least, they're proposing in their preliminary plans to take out something like 500 trees and 400 shrubs. And they have not been in touch with us about a tree permit or anything like that. But they're going to have to replace most of those trees and then where will they put them? And how will that work? How will that litigation work? So I assume the tree board will be very involved as those discussions go forward. Some of the designs that Vicky Scurry, our, our resident expert on large concrete structures, has, has put together involve like a combination of vines and, and narrow trees in front of the retaining wall as well as kind of a more attractive design to the retaining wall itself. I kind of like if you go almost in Bockel, there's like, there's big rocks and they have trees and plantings and vines growing in front of that. Something that softens it, you know, and makes it okay for the gateway to our city. So what's interesting is for a while, Sound Transit wasn't doing much and no one was getting very concerned. But even the city feels like Sound Transit's not, they're supposed to be collaborating with us, sharing information. And if they really have 60% design drawings at this point, like where's the collaboration?
Can you remind me, are there, there's some discussion of this. Are there sidewalks on both sides of three, median three of that?
They are going to eliminate the middle turn lane by town center. That's one thing. There's only a sidewalk on the lakeside. And I think the reason why they're not taking more land on the lakeside, which was their original idea, they had to take more houses and there's a ton of driveways there. Like the poor lady who came and talked at the council meeting, she said, well, if they take part of my land, I will have no driveway. The sidewalk will be at my front door. And so, you know, they're really hard to deal with Sound Transit because there's very single minded in my, in my experience and not that responsive. I think we're talking as a council and city about asking them to do a public meeting, but that they were supposed to do one for months just before the pandemic started. They kept postponing it, postponing it, and then the pandemic gave a really good excuse for not doing it. So they haven't done any public meetings in years at this point.
I think Walter had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Walter. Sorry. Now I see you.
I was, I was curious if they've, if anyone's asked the question, why are they putting a sidewalk on the, like on the lakeside when the Burke Gilman Trail is a block away or in some cases, you know, maybe a dozen yards away from that frontage?
I don't know the history of that originally. It was proposed on both sides, but the concern was they'd be taking even more property if they put them on both sides. That part I know. But how the decision, you may know, Steve, how there was a decision that the sidewalk should be, I think it was easier for them. But I don't, I don't recall.
I don't know that, I know the answer why one side versus the other, but I do know that it would have been involved taking a lot more property to get sidewalks on both sides. And they, they know they already had some structures, like the, the bridge over this creek we're talking about, to deal with. So some, it must have just been, you know, from the standpoint of the infrastructure that is already there. There's already more sidewalk on the lakeside.
So it was cheaper, basically. Yeah, yeah. So that, that sounds like a reasonable explanation. The other thing is, you know, they, they're widening it so that they can have a dedicated bus lane. But where the, that bridge is, they won't have, they won't be able to, they'll have to go over into the main lane. And then when they get to 145th, there won't be a dedicated bus lane there either. So, and then here's the part that I think is amazing. At 145th and I-5, where the station is, there's at both sides of I-5, there's only going to be a traffic circle, no traffic lane. So I've seen traffic circles work, but that is such a congested intersection. I don't know how that's going to work. But some of my colleagues think it's a good idea. I'm, I'm proven, you know, it's kind of where I am. I, I've seen them work very well. So, you know, maybe it will work out, but I just, as someone who gets stuck at that light, you know, waving to get on I-5, I don't know how that's gonna, how that's gonna be. So anyway, that, there's just a lot more heat under this issue. Not that Sound Transit is paying any more attention to us than before. So anything else you know about Sound Transit, Steve?
Oh, we are asking for a new tree count.
Oh, good.
So I think there will be a way for Sound Transit to plant trees offsite. So, so it's really just a question of, you know, how many trees do they, usually as the sign gets more specific, there's, there's a better count on the trees, so.
We as the council want all the trees to end up in Lake Forest Park. We don't want, you know, them to say, oh, we'll plant them someplace else because you have limited planting space along Bockel Way. So we, we want, you know, even if it's like, you know, different locations in the city or a fund where that, that provides free trees to citizens who aren't plant trees, you know, something, we, we don't know. We, we just started, but we definitely don't just want money. We had this discussion in the council meeting, I mean, you weren't there, Steve, I don't think, about, we don't just want a check. And Redmond apparently has an ordinance that says if you pay for a tree instead of planting a tree, it's $500. So, which easily covers a real tree cost even with inflation. So we actually are thinking about monetizing something substantial so that we don't end up with a fund that doesn't cover enough trees. So these are all discussions from last week, so. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. I'm sorry, it was, was it $500 a tree? I think so, $500 a tree. So anyway, just a surprise to me that, and, and you know that they're going to put, the bus stations are going to be at town center, 165th and 153rd, and they're 60 feet long because they have to be able to accommodate two buses together. And so I think people at Sheridan Beach who originally advocated for a bus stop at 165th, which they weren't going to have, are like suddenly saying, oh, we need that, that bus stop. But they have standard plants, you know, so that's what we've heard. Any other questions?
I have a question. Yeah, with the taking, the jurisdiction of that policy, that's a.
Well, the, the, good, Walter's right. So the, the question was, when they, when they do a taking, what happens to the land that becomes part of the right of way? And in most cases, it actually becomes part of city right of way. Sound Transit pays for it and then just it's part of our right of way. So that's yet another issue with Sound Transit is who's going to pay for the maintenance, whatever they install in that right of way.
Especially, especially stormwater drainage. You know, they, DOT already by law makes us do the maintenance of their stormwater drainage. So do we have to also end up paying? It's not cheap for, you know, and, and with Department of Ecology, it's getting more expensive to deal with your stormwater drainage because of the new requirements. So that is, that's an issue that we have with Sound Transit.
I have one more question.
Yes.
I'd like to segue back to the question. The cameras, the tickets.
Yeah. That revenue goes mostly into the general fund and we use it as a cushion. But we put it, we count it as unreliable because we'd like people to not speed and not get any revenue from the traffic campus. So, so that is, and, and it's highly fluctuating. You know, the, the biggest bump was when we turned them on at the start of school and a lot of people didn't know they had to turn it on. So anyway, yes, it goes, and, and there have been some proposals over time to put, you know, some of that into leasing or traffic regulation or sidewalks, that kind of thing. Under state law now, we can put traffic cameras in some different places, including kind of close walkways to schools. So that's one of the things we probably will be asking the community about, which is, are there, should we be putting traffic cameras? Thinking about cut through traffic and, and walkways to school, including even where I used to live. Mike just went to Prior Crest. So, you know, including that walkway, which gets a lot of customer traffic. So what, you know, do we want to do anything there? But nothing's made, being decided, just that's a possibility for the future. We know people hate.
One more question from Melissa. Did you have a question, Melissa?
I, I was just curious, do we know exactly how much ridership is down right now?
It was down, the last time I checked, and this is a long time ago, it was down 80%. But it could be up a little bit. But if you can just look at the bus stops, there aren't many, there aren't many people. And because they eliminated the direct bus to downtown, the 522 bus, that was, I think, the most popular bus in Lake Forest Park. And now that that goes to Roosevelt, I think the ridership on that, it at peak, I, I looked this up when I was running for city council. At peak hours, we had like 100 or so people getting on the 522 bus for, to go downtown and same, same numbers coming home. So that was for LFP itself. But of course, it comes from further out too. So it may be more beneficial to Kewmore, to Bockel, you know, than, than to us.
Did you say 80%?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, it's, it's, I have not checked, so that's just, put the caveat on it. Yeah. And, and you know, I think our, I think Larry Goldman, who's been going to Seacore Transportation Forum, he might have higher numbers. I think it was about the same for Metro too, so.
There was this story I didn't hear about the ridership has gone up since COVID.
Yeah. It's not back to where it was. And I, I actually wonder whether it will ever because all the, all the big tech companies are getting resistance going back, back to work, even like, you know, Microsoft wants people there half time and they're having trouble. So, so it will be interesting to see what happens over time. But right now, it's all feeding, it's going to all feed like rail, right? So that's another complicating factor. So if you could get on the bus and then go to like rail or park at 185th or Mount Lake Terrace or, I saw an ad for a house in kind of the northwest corner of Lake Forest Park. It said minutes from the new MLT light rail station, you know. So I, I think we have enough of the city in that direction that we may see people go that direction. So it's so unpredictable. Are we going to have a lot of parking ride impact on residential streets? Who knows, you know? It's really up in the air right now, but they are proceeding to the required properties apparently. Anyway, that's, that's a long explanation, sorry.
Councilor.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh, Steve, I have one question. We were talking about putting off the presentation from you and, and Maddie to talk about the sign ordinance recommendations and the reasonable use exemption recommendations till there was more breathing room with the budget deliberations going on. Do you have a, any timeframe that you know of in mind? I'll follow up with Phil and Ken.
At this point, I was, I was assuming it was going to be after the, you finished your adopted budget.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe early December.
January.
Okay. We just want you guys to get recognized for your work. And so I just want to keep it on the agenda to make sure that the council hears from you. I think they may not realize how complicated the sign work is, but.
Put your head around.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to whole business. Any updates on the RBE?
No, it was it, we're still waiting for council to give us a window for which one of them, where they want to go first. So.
Okay.
And then it depends exactly where the council as a whole goes, if they want to add things, change things, deliberate more. And there still has to be a public hearing for the council to adopt changes in the ordinance.
Any other whole business? So moving on to new business.
Yeah, so what I plan to do is just give you kind of an introductory presentation on top plan update. And we can still do that. It's just only Walter and Melissa and Public are going to be able to see my presentation on the screen. So what I propose is I've got the notes version of, we're going to go really old school here. If you're so inclined, I can make, take a five minute break, make some copies of this and then I'll, I'll put it on the screen for everybody else. You guys can just follow along. Okay?
You can't project it at all.
We, we are, we are under trained on, once we, we had to zoom up here and then we lost it and we can't get it back.
Yeah, no, it's, it's fine. That was just a different process.
Yeah, so the other, the other process is we all gather around this little iPad.
I, I for that.
Well, let's do a hybrid. Some of you can get around the iPad.
It's not a battery.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, well, now, now you're recording, so it becomes more on the.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, we're just.
Thomas to turn the recording on early so you can get that question. My apologies. Okay, so, so we passed out this paper copy of the presentation. So now I'm going to share it on screen so you guys can see what we're looking at here. So what I wanted to do is just, it's, it's, it looks like a lot of slides. We're going to go through them pretty quickly. I'll just give you an overview kind of, if you haven't really dealt with conference of planning and have a base, you know, what, you know, needs some, just sort of foundation in growth management act, what, what that requires communities to do. I think this is useful. It's kind of a reuse of a, what's called a short course, a short planning course that the Association of Washington Cities does for banking issues and stuff around. They do sort of like have a group that will go out and do these classes. So that's kind of what this is based on. And so let's just kind of work our way through it. Stop me if there's something that's not clear, you think, like to talk about it a little bit more in depth. But um, so just uh, the, the, the planning framework as of, you know, is, is talked about in terms of growth management. Is this uh, the, the act which was adopted initially in nineteen ninety and is uh, it sort of creates this uh, set of uh, various levels of planning. So we have the state level, the Growth Management Act, and we have regional planning agencies like the Puget Sound Regional Council. And then we have countywide um, planning policies. And so, so we're trying to be consistent at all levels. And, and so it's, it's not totally top down, we all get to, you know, come up with our own plans, but they do go through a certification uh, through at least the regional and state level that our top plan complies with uh, with those uh, higher uh, the, the, the upper level agencies. Um, and so uh. Um, so in addition to that hierarchy of uh, state regional policies, it also sets this, what you've probably heard of is the urban growth boundary, right? Which, which somewhere out there beyond Kent is a line where there's only a few sections beyond that. But it, it, the urban growth is supposed to happen, you know, either in, you know, pockets of, of urban areas around, you know, the region or on the east side of, of the west side of that line. And so that, of course, you know, leads in part to, you know, greater demand for housing. And so grappling with the pros and cons of that, preserving, you know, forest areas, but also needing higher density housing to produce the demand. And it creates a, a process where um, the public can participate and will get into that in greater detail as we go on. And, but also an appeals process, as it's called. There's uh, each region, part of region has a growth management hearings board. So if, if someone thinks your comp plan is complying with the Growth Management Act, uh, you could, they can actually take you to this uh, hearings board. It's a central Puget Sound that we've come to a few times, and we've had disagreements with state agencies usually, or, or regional agencies. Um, and then, uh, like I said, it's this uh, Growth Management Act gets amended on a regular basis. Uh, and so um, third slide just shows sort of an excerpt from a recent bill um, that is changing sort of the way we're looking at affordable housing. Instead of uh, this would be one of the main things we're going to grapple with this update is, instead of just planning for uh, to accommodate housing um, availability for affordable housing, it's been changed to plan for and accommodate, not just encourage. So this, this means, I don't think we have, you know, sort of the, the targets for making sure we're, we've got our, we've reached our capacity for density that we agree to through regional process. Also, maybe looking at affordability, are there ways uh, for, for people to, to get housing? Or have we made allowances for not only a number of units, but also affordability? So that, that's, that, that's, we would, would do things like, um, you know, amend our, our accessory dwelling units, like we just did uh, last year uh, to, to sort of create the ability for more affordable units. Um, those are the tools we can give them to.
I just add, um, we do have one King County Housing Authority affordable housing apartment complex in our city, which most people aren't aware of, and that's Woodland North on Boffway, which is kind of that multi-story one that just has solar panels put on it. So when you drive by down Boffway, look for Woodland North, and that's a King County Housing Authority project that recently got kind of updates. So very few people are aware that we have those units in our city.
Um, and so th- these are just so, some more aspects of that House Bill twenty, twelve twenty that um, I think the key thing we're looking at here is uh, we need to sort of document what, what the barriers are to housing availability. In addition to just providing sufficient capacity, which we already have plenty of capacities, it's a question about how affordable. Um, so yeah, we talked a little bit about the regional countywide policies. This, this diagram uh, just kind of gives you a, a visual sense of what we're talking about. The Puget Sound Regional Council has this twenty fifty vision that they've updated from their twenty forty vision. Every time we go through this, uh, we get a set of, an update of countywide policies first. So we kind of see what King County is thinking about in terms of how to implement the Growth Management Act and also address regional policies. So you get this sort of um, you know, uh, Russian doll shelf thing going on, and eventually it gets down to our local plan and we have the issues around that.
Steve, could you just mention the targets we have for growth under vision twenty fifty? And that's what you think, where you think we stand in terms of our zoning, accommodating that growth. So I do think that's important.
Right, I think, I said, um, uh, we, we went through a process of updating the council, I think it was last year. Cause we, we're, we're, we're already, the, the county staff is already saying, but we kind of know what King County has been allocated or it's gonna be allocated in terms of growth. And so they, we get together at sort of staff level, talk about, okay, you know, this is the number, countywide. And then we break it up into larger cities, we take this much, medium size, this much, and in small cities, this much. And so we were sort of kind of in between the medium and the small. And so just a process of kind of like, well, you know, we're, this city is expecting, you know, more growth because of this, you know, things going on there, other cities. But it, it was a pretty collaborative process, and kind of with the number, I can't remember exactly what the number is, but uh, we, it's much lower than, or it's very, you know, it's very doable with our capacity. When we added the Southern Gateway zoning, so it's a, and you know, and that's the key thing to understand, it's just not, we have to find a way to build this up. We just have to allow for them in our zoning if somebody else wants to build them, if a developer wants to build. So when we rezone the Southern Gateway area, there are some areas that are zone for up to seven stories, or seventy-five uh, feet of um, mixed use. And so those create a lot of uh, capacity for housing. So we saw some of that with the initial phase of the Southern Gateway, which was just twelve degrees north, so that's high density, similar family housing in this part. Townhomes and such, that created a hundred thirteen units. But that, the rest of it is zone for higher capacity. So that really helped out with reading these targets in an area that seemed appropriate for that kind of density. Um, so, so then, so now the real challenge would be, what, how do you ensure that there are, you know, barriers to affordability in, you know, that, that capacity? So I think what, that we talked about it a little later, is we're gonna need to do some kind of um, housing, um, what do we call it? A housing needs assessment. Sort of be a big chunk of what our comp plan is gonna utilize for, as a sort of a informing uh, what are some approaches we can take to addressing those barriers to affordable housing and options that we, uh, you know, that we could tweak our zoning to, to allow for. And, you know, so this is just talking about the, you know, the kind of the standard stuff that, that has always been a part of growth management. It's the targets are, that, the population projections, and then county needs is cooperative process. Uh, and then everybody figures out what their twenty year target is. And I'd say ours is probably around um, a thousand uh, over the next twenty years additional units. And, and so we've already got the capacity for that, we don't need to rezone to, to, to address that, that amount, you know, to someone, if there were projects that, uh, that were there that wanted to apply for. But the, the other key thing, we don't have to worry about so much growth managers providing public facilities and open space. Open space is a bit of a problem, you know? Um, but, you know, the idea is that you're, everything's supposed to be in place for that growth before it actually gets built. So the roads are out there, you're not building, you know, four thousand unit subdivision on a two lane road, uh, cause you know that's not gonna work. We already, the developers already put in the, the, the capacity to handle not just traffic, but, you know, utilities. So all that, all that should be in place before you do, you have a development. So uh, you know, we're much more incremental in the way we grow, because, you know, pretty much all the property has been developed, uh, except for the critical areas. So um, you know, the, when we do increase capacity, it's because really there are outside influences like sound transit. Who's, you know, who wants to increase capacity for the region? And, you know, we also, you know, uh, have, have expressed the fact we're kind of a bottleneck here for, you know, all the traffic that's coming through uh, five twenty-two, so there needs to be some sort of. But it doesn't really relate to any particular um, you know, project at this point. So what we do, we do rezone, is we do a vibrant impact uh, assessment on those and to make sure that the capacity is there. And that's usually how we end up addressing any rezones for higher capacity. And so that gets us to our, our local plan, which we're just getting started on right now. Um, and, and so you, you, you have, and I think you had a chance to look at it, but you have a twenty fifteen uh, comprehensive plan that was uh, actually about to be early twenty sixteen, uh, the council group called twenty fifteen, so make sure we have the finances with me. So uh, and, you know, the, this chart looks dated and complicated, but, you know, we're, we're just gonna kind of talk about it one, one piece at a time. But it's, uh, you know, I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy of this um, this uh, presentation, so you can just kind of, you know, break it down for yourself uh, as we get more into the process. But, uh, and also this, it repeats itself throughout this presentation. We've talked about these, you know, this, uh, these levels of, of planning that are going on, uh, so I don't think we have to, uh, you know, spend much more time on that. And then sort of the, the next step, uh, which I think is really the most fun part of, of giving a comprehensive plan, is the public engagement. At the very beginning, figuring out what, what is our vision here? We have a vision for twenty fifteen, and so the question for the public would be, does this still represent our vision? Uh, for, uh, it was adopted, you know, and, and really, the planning commission spent a lot of time on that, and then having publicly to see what people thought about that vision. Uh, but, but the public involvement process is, is all, is throughout. The idea is that, you know, you're early in all, you're getting out there, asking, telling people what we're gonna do, and um, and seeing, you know, what, what they think about it and, and continually updating uh, the policy evolution based on what the hearing to people. So uh, you know, the last time we did a community survey, uh, it's a telephone survey, I don't know, you know, that, that may be in the card, it might be. Uh, that, um, you know, depending what the council feels like, you know, but sometimes that, that just gives you just sort of this feel of, well, it's, you know, everybody's thirty percent best, thirty percent best. Doesn't give you the guidance sometimes, there's, there's really a strong reaction, anything, so. Um, what I, I think, uh, you know, is really helpful is to do a lot of small meetings, go out there and, you know, train planning, planning commissioners, or to have a meeting in the box or something. You go out there and you have a meeting, a couple of you do with, with uh, you know, a tiny room full of people, and you've got some pre uh, well-framed things that you can ask them about. You get that feedback, and everybody then gets kind of a general sense of what are the issues that arise into the top. It doesn't necessarily have to be a statistical survey, because this, you're gonna be feeding that back to people in, in the larger events you do later and seeing if they're, if they still resonate the way they did in the smaller meetings. Um, and then we'll get into the, what is really, you know, the, the, the meat of what the planning commission does. Looking at the, the goals and policies of, of what we want to update. We'll, we'll hopefully do this uh, housing needs assessment that I talked about. Uh, and then you'll go through, looking at, how does that ripple through the comprehensive, comprehensive plan? How do you make sure that all of these sections are consistent with one another? Uh, and, and, you know, with new policies, uh, how, do they conflict with other policies, elements? So we'll spend a lot of time just kind of walking through each other, starting with the land, cause that kind of drives everything else. Um, and then um, you know, working our way back to these other optional elements. The um, we, we have an economic development element and parks and recreation. Um, we're probably getting a climate change element, because we have a climate action committee. And so I, I think, um, my thought is we rely a lot on that, whether they want to, they're apparently doing a climate action plan. So I don't, the planning commission should, should dive in too deep, because I know where the, where that committee's going, because there's so much else that we could be working on. And um, so these are kind of dated in terms, but I, another thing that a city could do is, is like you did for town center, a subarea plan, as part of the climate planning process. And that, that would lead to some uh, you know, changes in zoning for a specific area. At this point, I don't think there's a subarea that, you know, really is dying for some, you know, really specific plan right now. We've got the town center, we have the Central Gateway. Uh, so, but we'll see, you know, what comes out of the process. Uh, and as I was alluding to, you know, this internal consistency, uh, you know, it sounds boring, you know, it can lead to a lot of discussion. Uh, and, and making sure that we're, we're working, whole plans working together on, you know, policy directions that everybody can get behind. And, you know, not leaving some um, aspect of the plan still uh, kind of outdated. Um, and, and so the, the next step, environmental review is that you, you, you're trying to figure out, you know, so with these new policies, have we created some impacts that we need to go through and, you know, do, is, is it sort of, you know, an incremental change where we do the, the termination of non-significance? Or do we need a, an environmental impact that we did for the town center? And we have to, you know, go through and create three scenarios, three policy scenarios, and, and, and look at all those, and TJ millions are in that process, town center. That's, you know, yeah, that's true, well. Um, and so uh, that's, that's still pretty far off, uh, and uh, we, we really, you know, don't know where, what direction that's gonna take until we kind of know what the policy changes are after creating a draft comprehensive. Um, but, you know, that, it can inform, you know, you're, if, you know, you put a draft plan out there, you get a lot of feedback, you might go back in and just, you know, reassess. Uh, this is the council did for town center, but, well, you know, we put out these three uh, options, everybody felt like there was too, there was too much density. Go back and reassess through that process, and we adopt something that was a lesser impact. That's what that environmental process helps you do, to figure out, you know, what you communities. Um, yeah, covered that. You know, the, the local adoption, you know, is, is just kind of the first step, saying, you know, everybody's on board with the plan we end up with. And then you have to, um, as I said, only get certified by the regional agency, and then you send it to the state for their review. They have like sixty days to, to take a look at it and see if they think it's going to be quite, uh, consistent with the Growth Management Act and everything. But, um, you know, through that process, we'll have more public outreach, once we have a document for the public to look at. Um, and um, so, so then, the, this, this is really just kind of like, I had to come up with a schedule and a, I'll pass on.
Yeah.
I had, um, put this, we, we get a non-competitive grant to, to do this. And, and, but we still have to make an application, explain kind of how we're gonna go through this. And so this is sort of my first take, just for the grantee, it's Department of Commerce, about what, how we think we're gonna move through this process. Some of the stuff like the task um, one A or A one is, is really kind of in the weeds, because it's, it's a document that we need to fill out with um, with staff just to make sure, uh, you know, we know kind of what we're consistent with in Growth Management Act, and what you gotta work on. Um, and so uh, for you, for those of you that are still out in the, um, other virtual, I'll, I'll show you more detailed documents that passed out here. Uh, rest of the mission here in just a second. But um, so the real, what we'll, what we'll really will be looking to the commission for is helping in task A two, which is development of this scope of work, participation plan. We'll bring you draft, uh, for you to review in terms of, uh, that it'll look sort of like this document that, um, we have, but, but it will, you know, it'll probably ask more or more questions, have, definitely have more detail about the public engagement, and what do you want to do in that process? So that'll be our first stage, which I think we're gonna get to, um, maybe a draft of later this year, in, in your December meeting. Um, and then based on that scope, we're, we're gonna put together an R F P, a Request for Proposals, and try to get a consultant um, on board that gives a lot better capacity to, to work through updating the plan and coming up with the, their expertise will be to make sure our plan is consistent with the Growth Management Act and that it's incorporating the public involvement that we hear in terms of new policies, new, new direction for the, the plan's vision, um, those kind of things. And then um, the, um, once we have a consultant selected, then we'll start that, that outreach and listening process that probably take, uh, you know, kind of, will be the, the, the big product that comes out of this first year. See, this is kind of like a. See this kind of like a two-year process as you can see here. So we've got enough time, we've got a little bit of cushion.
Could I make two comments? First of all, this seems daunting, but we have a pretty good comprehensive plan right now. So the, the real question is where do we want to see changes for finance or where do we have required bad things? So it isn't like the whole comprehensive plan is, it is kind of on your plate, but it isn't. The scope of work isn't, you, you can't kind of focus it in and narrow it and pick what the planning commission wants to zero in on. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing is same on the public participation plan. The planning commission has statutory authority. The consultant is advising you, not the other way around. So important to make sure that you're the decision makers and they're giving you input. And if you need new things from them, you can make that request within the scope of work. But it's important that this is planning mission driven, um, focus, even on the elements of public participation. That makes sense for our community. I think they can give us a menu and you can choose from them. I think in this day and age, uh, we might want to look at, at more ways to do things remotely and online. Because people are busy and still kind of reeling from the, from the pandemic. So I just wanted to make those two points that it, it might seem intimidating to look at all this, but it really is. Where are the changes that you're going to focus in on? And then second, you're kind of the driver, not the passenger.
Who makes the selection of the consultant?
Well, usually what we do is, um, after we've got an RFP published, then, um, ask, um, the council, mayor, you know, what kind of selection committee do you want? So it would usually be like a member of the council, maybe a mayor, a couple of planning commissioners. And, um, they, they work through their process of having an interview, uh, with everyone who submits for it. And then they make a recommendation to council, uh, or to the person, the mayor. This is who we think you should, um, start a negotiation with.
Is it AWC that keeps a list of consultants that you submit?
Well, that's, that's, that's for like small roster works. You don't have to go through that RFP process.
Okay. I didn't realize that there wasn't some hyper, yeah.
No, we, we, there, there's a, you know, um, a pretty known list of people who, who do this kind of work. And, and so, um, you know, I think, I think we'll, we'll have a pretty good sense from the work they've done. You can always look at that work they've done in other communities, uh, to make sure it looks like the kind of thing, uh, the quality product that we want.
But I'd just say, under the growth management act, planning commissions are empowered under that statute. So it's not like, you know, a commission that the city has just made up. It's something that's, you know, part of the state structure.
It gets throughout the process. So we can also provide guidance and development RFP as well. Is that correct?
Well, I don't, I, I mean, I guess you could if you wanted to.
Your, your scope, your scope is, is the meat of that RFP.
That's true.
So when you approve that scope, then it actually, uh, I, my opinion is that you go to council. They approve that scope as well and then we go on.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I would send through that process.
Yeah, yeah.
How many responders do you anticipate?
We usually get, uh, you know, uh, five or six people who, you know, really put, put together a good proposal. And we narrow it down to, to three or so to interview.
We're economy oriented.
So I, I don't know this, this time around, I mean, uh, it will really be interesting to see. Hopefully some of the larger jurisdictions are ahead of us and people will, the, the, their talents will be open up so they can do work for us. And that's my main concern is that, you know, there's, there's so much, so many consultants who sort of leathered the whole pandemic thing. And they're still out there looking for work.
That's really, that's why I ask, I have kids at Charlie's client and they have a couple of RFPs. So they're struggling to get respondents, um, not in this specific scope, but just in general. So that's, that's, hopefully that's not the case.
Hopefully not. So I, I stopped this chair. I don't know if Melissa or Walter, you guys had questions? I couldn't see at this point, should I go on? Okay. So, yeah, the, I just wanted for, uh, your benefit, um, virtual, just to, just to put, put this other document up. That it's just a couple more pages in more detail about, uh, this, this approach. We talked about all these things and the basic point of that, that, um, that schedule slide, it's just, you know, this, this is how it all might all play out, um, over a, a two-year period. And so I'm going to switch to the other, other document. All right. So you guys, we're just looking, looking at a detailed version of the tasks and the actions underneath these greater tasks. And I don't, I don't think we need to go into detail. I just want to give you a sense of, you know, how we, how we break this up into manageable pieces. You know, we're really not, not going to be coming at you, you know, like every, and I can have like meetings every two weeks or anything like that. Until maybe the very end and, and then, you know, the schedule starts to get kind of compact. But, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll put together a draft of these, um, the participation plan and the scope of work, uh, early next year. And as I said, you know, get input from the commission and the council. Hopefully get everybody on board with that. And then we develop our request for proposals, we advertise it and, um, then bring back a recommendation to the council, uh, that they have to approve that contract that can be executed by the mayor. And, um, then we can, you know, then we have the horsepower to get into that visioning and outreach process. And figure out kind of what our main strategies are going to be. Train volunteers, all, all those things so that we can really have a robust, uh, get, you know, get the sense that the community understands what we're up to. As Councilman Bodie says, it's, it's really about updating a pretty good, um, comprehensive plan. That's, you know, it's only, um, seven years old now. And, and so, uh, like I said, I think there's going to be some emphasis on climate change, housing affordability. Those are really what you're going to be looking at and there are other things we can do, um, that, that, uh, you know, once we have, we'll also figure out kind of what we mean by this housing assessment. What, what are we going to identify, uh, either, you know, barriers or groups that are, are, don't have same access, those kind of things. And what we can do about those that would turn into, um, you know, policies that you might consider adding to the housing element, plan element. Or we have a human services element. And, um,
So Steve, do the, just the things like the tree canopy and the sensitive areas, that fits into the land use component?
Right. That's sort of like, um, after, you know, we adopt the comprehensive plan. Or as, as we're getting close to being able to adopt, we're looking at our, our land use recommendations to see, is there anything that needs to be done to those? At the same, ideally, you know, according to growth management, you're supposed to adopt, uh, your updated comprehensive plan and any regulations that need to be updated to be consistent with it at the same time. No, no community does that. They, you know, they usually adopt the company, you just don't have the horsepower to like do it all at one time. And then they change their regulations that would say, we will, you know, uh, do this within 12 months or, or whatever, you know.
That's how, I was just looking at the headings under which those, that kind of more environmental elements would fit.
Yeah.
Those aspects like preserving the tree canopy and, and, uh, you know, protecting critical sensitive areas. Those, those would fit under the land use kind of heading.
Maybe some, we have a environmental, uh, we get a kind of a long, we, it kind of develop encompasses environmental regulations and shoreline. That's, uh, the, you know, it's the second element. And, and so, I mean, that, that's another question. Would it be helpful to have a binder with the company in it just to like, you know, go through? Uh, I, I, I like paper. When it comes to something like that where it's a document you're looking at over and over again. I, I think we'll try to do that.
Especially if you think it's going to take two years.
Right. There'll be, you know, we'll, you'll.
The town center binder was hugely useful perhaps.
Yes, it was.
That's right.
Particularly for having more in-person planning commission meetings here that don't have easy internet access for computers.
Yeah.
It becomes even more important.
Yeah. Oh, Steve, I have one more question. So, you know, town center, one of, one of the elements that our community has gotten accustomed to, uh, really caring about is community spaces. And so is that an element of a comprehensive plan or is that like something like traditional, like?
Well, it certainly can be because, I mean, you're going out there and you're, you know, this is such a broad-based document. You're asking, you know, what's, what's, uh, what's missing?
Yeah.
And it, it, you know, it can, you know, something like a parks or, or, or a coast element. Obviously a little narrower focus on that, that type of thing.
Right.
But you certainly could.
It's a subset of community places, if you think about it, because community places could be broader than parks and recreation.
Yeah. So that's probably, that's probably not everybody's workshops. And that's certainly become something emphasizing the vision of the new policy.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I just, you know, I was thinking more like old fashioned land use. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and so, yeah, the, the, the real question might come down to like, um, uh, not spring of next year, but spring of following year. You're going to get up to a point where you're looking at all of these elements, uh, and, you know, and the way a company is set up. It's just, you know, all this is a hundred page. It's not a huge document. And, and then there's all this background stuff. So the updating the background stuff, that's just supposed to inform. So, so you're just kind of working through these hundred pages, making sure they're consistent or we're adding to it. It's consistent with what's already there. And so that's, that's what I was talking about. This is kind of, you know, the grind part of it where you're, we're going through a different element, uh, each month and kind of looking at it. And you're saying, you know, I think, you know, that this language is really dated or, you know, it sounds, you know, inappropriate now. So, so you're, you're doing that. So it's like, like we do with the regulations. That's kind of where it gets to, but you're doing it. It's a policy basis. So you're going to get familiar with, you know, the, a different kind of, of, the, the, the way we write goals and policies is a little different from regulation. So it'll just take a little while for it to get a hang of that. But, but, uh, you know, I'm sure you will and, and you're going to find stuff in there as you go through it. And that's why the binder will help you. You're, you're reading ahead. You, you've got one, everybody's got some element that they're most interested in. And, and so like, Lois, this could be sidewalks or hung up sidewalks. So, so, you know, and, and so that, that's good. I mean, everybody's, everybody's focusing on different parts of it. We get a better product and it's consistent. So that's why that's kind of a big, uh, list there. And that, you know, that, that may be where, you know, the council's getting concerned that they want time to review this. And so you're, you know, early summer of 2024, you're, the planning commission might be having, uh, you hope over the four summer vacations. If that's in the center, everybody just to get this recommendation out to the council. So they can be reading through it over the summer and really start, uh, you know, better review, uh, in the late summer, early fall. And then adopt to 2024.
Is it possible to be giving as we go through the sections, giving the council's section?
Yeah.
Well, is it all covered on?
Yeah. I mean, there, there also is going to be someone to play with other committees. We're probably bouncing elements off of, you know, the climate action committee and the parks direct committee. Uh, so, so that, yeah, there is going to be some back and forth and some joint meetings to kind of like ensure that it's on the same page. Uh, so, so, yeah, that, that, and, and there's nothing, you know, you've got your liaison. You can also have, give the council updates, the work sessions, like here's where we're at.
That's what I see as most likely rather than giving us product coming, giving us even a, you know, a quarterly update or a twice a year update on how the work on the comprehensive plan is going. Cause this is going to be a learning curve for most of the council members to not, I have the council does not have this before. So, uh, so that's, I think that education, the public participation includes educating the council.
Yeah. We don't want there to be any surprises, uh, once you make a recommendation. The council should have a good feel for what's coming from the commission.
Do we have, um, since this is clearly a long time, we have a lot of folks that are hopping on and off for right now. So that are aspiring for experience.
We do. Well, TJ's is, uh, ending in February, but I think.
I think I'm going to have to step out early.
Tell them now.
Because of the conference.
I mean, I think that actually fits well, but no, I just, uh, if I'm not going to be here for November, December, January and February, it doesn't make much sense. Uh, I'm 80% sure that's happening right now. So I've been waiting, uh, to make sure. But I think it is good timing to have somebody, have people come on and be able to stay for that duration of two years.
I like the idea of looking at that, whose terms are expiring and whose can be extended and maybe probably early about whether, you know, you're willing to extend. I think that makes a lot of sense, Steve, and the council will want to know that we have that stability. So I think that we have ability to extend up to a certain point.
Right. Yeah. And I mean, the, and the good thing is that, um, you know, the, the four of you and Walter and Melissa are fairly new to the, um, commission. So I need to serve, of course, two, three-year terms, but it is possible to extend that. Hopefully that won't be necessary just to get to the conference.
Do you want to see if they have any?
Yeah.
Oh, you're almost done.
Yeah, I'm almost done. And, um, the, the rest of this is, is like we talked about, you know, seat review and, and workshops, um, before the council. So I'll stop, uh, the share now and just kind of see, uh, if there's any questions from anybody else, Melissa or Walter. No, at this point.
No questions for me.
All right.
Can I say this is really cool and an important document? This is like a fundamental of the planning mission. So I'm pretty excited for you guys and excited to see what you come up with. Just giving you a little bit of a pop here. Two years' schedule. I think it is really important. It sets the stage for the future of our community. And, uh, you know, gets, gives us a chance to talk to the community again about where things are going. So just really important work.
I'm wondering if we could jumpstart the work a bit with, yeah, the assessment, uh, housing assessment. Yeah. I think that's a question of it. Look at other cities that have done that, those kinds of, what do we call it?
Housing needs assessment? Yeah. My, my thought was that, um, you know, that, that hopefully the consultant can pretty much simultaneously be working on the outreach vision. But also getting, uh, wound up to do the needs assessment. So that by the time you reach the point where you're, uh, getting into the individual, reviewing individual policies and things like that. You've already, you have both, you have the report about the, the outreach, what people said was important. You also have this technical document saying, you know, here, here are the various, uh, issues that, uh, with housing. So, yeah, I know that that's, that's been something you've, you've talked about, uh, previously some means, well, let's just go ahead and do that.
But it makes sense to have so, do that work.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I don't, I don't think we have the expertise in-house to.
Yeah.
To do that kind of thing. So.
We have three really good pieces of information to help fuel that. One is when we adopted the town center code, the council adopted both affordable housing incentives and affordable housing requirements for a multi-family, I think over five units or more, something like that. I forgot what it was, what the threshold was. So we did that. Nothing has really occurred under that yet, but it sets the stage for some incentives for affordable housing. And then the work that you guys all did on the ADU coordinates, that's, I think for our community especially, that's, uh, really important. And, um, one bit of information is that Don Feeny and Jack Toffin, who worked on the, some of the original, you know, ideas that got brought here. They've been, that Don just told me he's been talking to a guy who has like prefab ADUs, you know, that, that are like built elsewhere and come on site. And then the city can approve those plans in advance. So that can be a very affordable, it's one step beyond having design drawings that are pre-approved. It's having, you know, not only the design drawings, but a company that will bake them at an affordable price. So that's kind of cool, I thought.
So on the, uh, ADU, I just want to say, I thought that was very effective public outreach. So, on the, uh, ADU, I just wanna say I thought that was very effective public outreach.
Absolutely.
Uh, and in particular, the online survey that was there that gave kind of both good standardized information as well as the ability to contribute, you know, individual thoughts. And it really set a good baseline for future discussions. And that sort of survey was completely absent from the town center process. And not having shared information for the planning commissioners to work with created nightmares. And so I think that it would be very wise to follow, and Matty really led it to that sort of public engagement.
It's become a new, like, model and, because it was so, I honestly had low expectations and, uh, the comments were awesome, the people submitted detailed comments, uh, that they felt strongly about on a whole range of issues. So, I do think from the council's perspective, that kind of set a benchmark. I suspect the Parks and Rec, the Climate Action Committee is doing a survey right now, I haven't seen it, but they're trying to use the same basic approach. And I'm sure Parks and Recreation, uh, the Parks and Recreation Board will be looking at something similar. So you guys really, uh, I know Matty led it, but it wasn't just Matty, and so you guys really, uh, did something important there.
Yeah, I also wondered about the, uh, those apps, the Nextdoor. I know as a mom, I am connected with all the PTA groups, and it is amazing how many, um, moms or PTA members are on that app, but Nextdoor, like, like I had though, like, somebody will say, why was the fire, you know, fireman driving by, you know, the place? And then you'll have all these people who know the answer, it's, it's, yeah, it's pretty remarkable. I was hoping we could use that type of platform as well, because I know the survey, I wasn't sure what platform Matty used, but, you know, things like the Nextdoor, um, is pretty wide-reaching for a lot of.
A lot of advertising through Nextdoor.
Facebook too.
They exactly, Facebook, there's a LFP, yeah.
There's different neighborhood groups too that have, um, uh, you know, a Facebook group or a way to get information out, so.
Yeah, the city has a, a Nextdoor account and a Facebook account, and, uh, but, um, you know, I, I don't know if, if that's, uh, you know, if, if it's a two-way process for the city, it'll have some limitations because the city doesn't really live in, members of the city.
Yeah.
But, but as, 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 as residents, you could probably use it, uh, more effectively than the city.
Exactly, oh, I agree, yeah, speak through us.
Yeah, correct.
But you can do, use the, the city notice system.
Yeah.
Some of that gets picked up then of the various information, things like, you know, on there. I noticed, and I've noticed the police reports get picked up now and that.
You know, I, I think would also be, like, local 104 is always hopping, I would love to, like, partner with them to say, hey, could you guys host, uh, you know, uh, a beer and, you know.
Beer and cop plans.
No.
I would be a new one.
I mean, you know, they're just hosting, they might be overwhelmed.
Well, no, they've, they've got more space for this group, we changed the rules for them, so they could go all that way.
Can I just add, no more pizzerias in the city for a second?
I wanna trade their jaws instead of.
Oh.
That's not going in the right direction.
I know, but it hasn't, like, every time it changes, it doesn't change.
No.
Can I ask another question about this? So, is this, this is the scope of, of, of work?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is it possible for you to just highlight what the planning commission really would, or is this something?
Yeah, the, I mean, as I was saying, I think the, um, commission is really involved in, um, in that A2, uh, and a subset of commission will be involved in A3, uh, as a selection committee. A, A4 is really big for the commission, and then, um, your B2 is, is the, is really the meat of the work. It probably, when you get updates on the housing need assessment, uh, directions going, probably get a chance to say, yeah, that makes sense, or, uh, it's gonna rely on some expertise there, but, but, you know, you'll, you'll get the benefit of that document and of some sort of summary of all of the public input, or sort of as, as a, you know, besides your own experience in that process to help you to guide that B2 discussion of the return. All right, any other questions from? Who, or, uh, you?
So, can we just talk about the steps of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. I mean, we want to start building into the, I mean, I don't know how many feedbacks you've had to come out, but, but, uh, it's been a while, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's, it'd be.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, it's, it's on the planning department, um, webpage, you see under long-range planning, I'll send out a link for it, but in the meantime, we'll just try to, um, maybe get, you know, some copies available in the binders for you over the next week or so, just letting you know they're available where you pick up at the front desk, if you wanna come in and get them ahead of time. Since, uh, now we open up so quickly, uh, but, but now it's, it's still gonna, uh, be November, be November before we know it. But, so, yeah, so the idea, really, that, that would be, um, a really good, just, uh, a task before the next meeting. It's just getting up to speed on the cop plan as it currently has been adopted. We'll be working on, um, that scope of work, um, in one detail, and stop later. Get this out to you, it's your link, um, tonight or tomorrow, uh, at the latest, so.
Just to clarify, are you giving us copies?
I'll, I'll, I'll get your copy, yeah, we'll get your. Yeah, we can help, uh, what we do, we, we can make paper. It's fast, it's, it's, and put it in binders.
I think two current council members were, were planning, uh, something for, uh,
Yeah.
you know, EVO and Celebrative Rec, I was wondering if they'd be willing, maybe invited you to just say, here are some, you know, things we wish you had known, or.
We can invite them to participate, even if they just fall into the next meeting, and say, you know, less, wherever they fall, that sounds, that's a smart idea. Yeah, I heard John was on the planning commission a long time, I, 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 I was, I attended planning commission meetings when he was a commissioner, I didn't, I didn't know that summer.
All right, I will invite, uh, John and Senna, probably another one, if it's on the commission as well. We're too, but it's compacting right now.
Yeah, I don't know.
All right, any other thoughts, um, to move on to?
Duncan Woods, or the?
I'll say, I mean.
He was, he was on the council, um, for the previous update, probably, he was on the, he was on the planning commission a long time as well.
So, they, what did, what, what sorts of ideas did you have, like, bring up? Thoughts that you, did you have any thoughts to bring, to, to get going, to cook it, like, what kind of thoughts to go on?
Steve, we should ask Richard. I think Richard would be a good person to ask if he's willing to do it. Richard Saunders, he, he, uh, he really, I think, put a lot of time and energy into it, so.
Thing I am curious about is, a lot of the cities have already adopted cop plans that might, we ask there's a climate change or, you know, I don't know, I don't know, is there actually, yeah, they're much work on this, just quite yet.
Well, yeah, Shoreline has adopted it.
They did, okay.
So, you can, you can Google that, look at if there's, I think, I think the, um, climate action committee is a little bit closer to that one. Ken Moore is also, uh, you're, they're close to, uh, or they, they, they adopted something, I've seen some backup form between, um, Ken and staff.
Okay.
And the commission, or, or it's in their minutes, you go, go look at, um, the climate action committee, um, minutes on the, they have a, if you're looking for all the various commissions, or.
Yeah.
You can look at, uh, their, their minutes, the last of the meetings, and that's where they, they actually had somebody come from Ken Moore to talk to about their kind of.
That's right, actually.
Part of what we're trying to do, council member Cora Connie has made this point, actually, that the, uh, King County Executive, uh, King County elected officials meeting last week, which is, so for a city like ours, um, the amount of climate change impacts that we can influence. You know, we can't influence aviation and, and gross transportation, you know, large-scale transportation issues. So, we're, we're gonna have to scale it to what we can, you know, actually implement and encourage. So encouragement's okay, public education encouragement, you know, it doesn't have to all be mandates, so I think that's one of the challenges of the climate action. What can we?
So, that reminds me of some of the conversations that we had on the tree board, that, you know, there's some trees, native trees that just aren't going to make. And most people don't know that, you know, that, where, where, we want these, these native species to exist, but, but because of the change, we should say, well, over, make that, so how to replace it, it's species with, uh, that will be.
Yes, there's a lot of, I, you know, I've worked in this area for a while, there's a lot of resistance to the idea that adjusting to the change instead of trying to increase what we have.
Yeah.
Uh, in place is, is a hard one for people to get their minds around. Yeah, that's a really good point, so. So.
It is, it is, because everything's kind of moving north, is the way I look at it.
Palm trees are gonna be a lot better.
Yeah, those people who have those rare northwest palm trees and their southern exposure, they're gonna do a whole lot better.
So it sounds like we're gonna all, I guess we'll all get a copy of the cop plan, and then, uh, it's maybe in about a week, you think, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll let you know when they're available.
Perfect, okay.
Probably by the end of, uh, maybe next week.
Oh, perfect, okay.
It's also online.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Focus on volume one, don't, don't get, uh, intimidated by volume two, all the good stuff is already there.
Oh, okay. And then, I guess, any, uh, can we move on? Can I, can we move on to reports or announcements?
Um, yeah, I have my own question, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, if there's not any additional.
Can I, can I have a, I guess this is an announcement. Um, anybody else Seattle Times readers, uh, in here? So, this last week, I forget exactly when, there was a nice article in their data section, which was, "The share of cost burden Seattle households has fallen." So this is for Seattle, not technically Lake Forest Park, this is for the city of Seattle. Uh, I'll probably slip into using we, I do work in Seattle, and I have lived there. But I think that this story has not reached and has not gotten enough press. So basically what it's saying is, is that there's this metric that's often used, that is, if you spend more than thirty percent of your income, you are cost burdened for housing, right? That's why, why they use in many places. So in 2010, there were a greater percentage of Seattle households that were cost burdened, exceeding that thirty percent threshold than there are now. And the biggest drop was for homeowners, but even among renters, that percentage of housing cost burden folks has dropped. So in aggregate, housing has become more affordable in Seattle in the past, I believe this is 2021 to 2010. It is contrary the usual story that we hear about housing. And what drives it is the explosion in income, which has outstripped the explosion in housing costs. And that's at the upper end, think Amazon, it's at the lower end, think minimum wage, uh, increases. So, I think too often it's forgotten, I mean, I, this is something that I've kind of, you know, I think, been realizing in this study, that affordable housing depends on income. And so in aggregate, to, to read, to actually, through this past twelve years, to increase the amount of affordable housing is really quite extraordinary. That does not mean that there are not housing challenges that are reaching, no, there are. But it means our policies overall are working well. We're not gonna fix every problem, there are more problems we solve. But when we hear the term housing crisis, let's remember, we have fewer cost burdened households now than we did a decade ago. I think that should be trumpeted through, like, loud and clear across everywhere, because I think it's due to successful policymaking of little groups like us, groups in Seattle, the planners working on many of these things. I think it's really quite an extraordinary tale that they've been able to pull that off.
You know, that made me think that when I first, um, before I came on council, a lot of the focus of the council was not on the word affordable, but on trying to make sure that, like, teachers, firefighters, police could afford to live in our community, you know, so it was, uh, and, and what about new families, you know, coming to our community? The, the, because I think you're right, the word affordable is imprecise in a way, right?
Well, no, I think in aggregate, it is very precise. I mean, I think if you're going to talk about affordable housing, I mean, it's really important what people are spending as a percent of their income.
Yeah.
And the reality is, is because of a lot of the economic growth we've had, all sorts of different fields have experienced that same wage growth, that it isn't as narrowly confined as some people, I think, as often it's portrayed to be only at the upper limits. And I think that's where those numbers get generated.
Do you, do you think that that still, um, supports kind of a debt curse, uh, profile of, like, all income fights too? Or do you think it's, do you think that that would really be favoring, so, like, what, you know, upper echelon of income earners? So Seattle becomes kind of like San Francisco, where just only a certain number of people can really afford it, yeah.
So you know what I, what, so what, where I really think it comes down to is, I actually really think the minimum wage increase in Seattle was very much an affordable housing policy. It's not often thought about in that way, but we have, but one of the things that, that we haven't seen is that is, in a sense, you've had wages at the lower end and the upper end increase relatively consistently in percentages because of that. There's downsides to that, you might argue there's fewer lower-income wages, evidence on that, I don't follow it closely, if there's a study that you dug, it's kind of murky and unclear yet. So, but I think that prosperity is broader based because of that, and I don't think we often think about those two being linked to the way that they really are. Not to mention, I also think spending thirty percent of your income when you make twice as much is not as much of a burden if you only make that one X, because inflation has not kept with that, it's only about twenty-five percent over that time, whereas incomes have increased. I wanna say it's about double if you take out the, uh, in real terms, it's not quite that.
Louis, though, I think what you're speaking to, though, is, uh, yes, there's the aggregate advantages that have been caused by the work that community groups do, that policies has, has made available. I think we're, first, the, diversity isn't just about affordability. I mean, affordability has a lot to do with allowing people to live in, you know, um, communities such as ours, but, but I do think where we made impact on diversity is, is maybe you changes that we made in our, because it, it's, we're talking about the charitable families, you know, how people people of, um, you know, different cultures, they, they live as bigger families, right? That can't necessarily happen without changes being made to, uh, to zoning or whatever, it's my favorite, with ADUs, that, that allows for those extended families, that better allows for those extended families to, to exist in the community, like, like, most part. In terms of, um, and, and, and I think that's a really good point of what you're making, that you're making, but it doesn't address the diversity, so.
So, I meant diversity, uh, of income groups too, that's what it comes, yeah. I guess it kind of also got me thinking about the, the missing note. I guess it kind of also got me thinking about the, the, uh, missing note that came to, to visit, um, and I, I think that, because I, I guess there is a question of what is affordability, what does that mean for, for us as a city as we start talking about this too? I'm curious, I don't know if they, did they ever contact us, or do you know?
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, they, they, there was an email conversation, they, they wanna come to the November meeting.
The November meeting?
Yeah, like presentation.
Okay, here you go.
That's an awesome program, I had no idea it was up and running for, like, thirty years. Their average homeowner stays seven years and then moves out, and then they turn property, um, that's just, pretty awesome, or something. It's just like TJ's point, why haven't I heard more about this?
Um, so I guess that's also coming up at the next meeting then too, and we can kind of continue to explore this notion of affordability, because I guess that'll be. Any, any other, uh, additional comments, citizen comments that we have?
Um. So.
Okay, uh, with that, I guess the agenda for the next meeting we'll be talking about, so we'll all get a chance to look at the COP Plan.
First section, alright, so.
Volume one. And I, I think the font is big, too.
Short paragraphs.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and so, yeah, so the missing middle people, and we'll invite, um, ex-planning commissioners who work on comprehensive plans, updates before, uh, to, uh, give the questions, and, uh, they have something more detailed for you to look at in terms of scope, but, um.
Okay, um, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
Wait, I missed, I wanted to make a citizen comment, not as a planning commissioner, but as a citizen. Um, so, going on right now over at the civic club, if I understand right, is the, um, for the civic club board elections are going on, so something going on with the civic club is their attempt to try to dredge in front of the property. So, this is another thing that I feel like should be a major imperative of the city to make that process work for a big section of the city. The fill that's going on in there is terrible for salmon. So there's a big environmental concern, it's a big area of recreation for many of the city, it also is adjacent to the Lion Creek Reserve, and then to the property that the city wants to develop down there. It, the siltation there is a major, major issue, it is in effect human caused, as we lowered the lake level and restricted where the river was. Our shoreline master program treats dredging as a terrible activity for reasons that are not based in science, because there's no distinguishing what dredging actions are being talked about. So this is a man-cried problem, very similar to what I grew up with in Southern California, where they do regularly dredge the back bay, otherwise it would be a back metal by now. Um, and I think there was a really interesting phrase that was used in one of the civic club's newsletters, and that was, "We don't think the city is being actively hostile." The fact that they felt compelled to write that one, even I would have edited that phrase out, but the, using that, it is because the city generally, and I think that spans many different branches, has not been very responsive to helping them navigate this process. I'm mostly aware of this process being, I mean, I'm a civic club member, but I was actually very disturbed by their potential mitigation plans, uh, that I thought would have library reaching things, so I kind of, neither necessarily for or against, but I think this is an issue that needs more attention in particular for our environment, that creek should not end in a giant expanse of silty stuff that is not navigable by salmon. So I, I won't be around to take that on, but I've tried to keep it low level there, and that's on my way out. I think this is an issue that has bigger ramifications throughout the city's plans than is being paid attention to. I made the comment as a citizen because I live by there, so I am close to it, I understand it, I also, you know, uh, geologist, so I am kind of familiar with some of the sediment transport problems.
Well, and it's, it's true, as we figure out what the, how the park's going to occur, at least there'll be a beach there for people to use, and so the issues could be, there could occur there as well, tragic issues.
Even where the park is being a problem?
Yeah.
I know, Kenworth.
I think the civic club has a bad, you know, it's, uh, I know they've tried a number of times, you have to get so many different permits to be able to do it, including from, you know, fisheries and the Army Corps of Engineers and NOAA. Like, you have to get about three federal, two federal, there's three state permits.
But they've had a permit in the past.
Yeah.
Uh, it's that they, you do have to have a consultant to kind of, you know, deal with all the different levels of government, and sometimes, I, I, you know, it seems like, um, that's something that, we encourage them to do is to get somebody, um, you know, to navigate the process, but we probably could make it easier, uh, if we updated our shoreline management.
To encourage it, yeah.
I think Melissa has a question.
Uh, I was just curious about that process, I mean, do, is that something that the other cities partner in doing? Like, you know, because there's Kirkland on the other side, and, I mean, how does the dredging work?
Well, everybody has to adopt, uh, on Lake Washington, uh, a shoreline management plan. It's really, it's much more top-down and comprehensive plan, because it has to be approved by the Department of the College. So, so we need to, you know, float this idea, see what other, we can see what Kirkland's doing, that's, that's been an approach we've taken before, say, well, you're letting Kirkland do this, like, can't Lake Forest Park have this easier process? Uh, and, and so, uh, that's, that's one of those outstanding things that we need to do, is finish our update, it got kind of shut down at the beginning of the pandemic. And, and so that's why it was on your work program, let's take a look at the dredging policy, and, um, we didn't even know. So, we can add that to, uh, you know, if we get to it, uh, you know, December, just kind of look at what those are, if you want to.
Did, did that be part of the segue a little bit into land use at all, or totally different?
Oh, it, it will be an issue with the update, but, you know, the question is, do you, you wanna wait to, to do that adoption that we really should have done in twenty twenty, uh, and, and put it off till twenty twenty-four? We could move that, uh, Louis, at this point, um, you know, I, I think it'd be great if the planning commission knew that very specific issue, but I would like to see the, the overall, uh, um, shoreline manager plan go to council, so they can, they can just adopt it, and then we could be looking at it in terms of what we do for the next round, because we're really overdue on that one. Make it to, to go through the whole thing again with the planning commission. You, you guys went on it, they did, there was a review of it, uh, in some public meetings and stuff like that, so. So I, I think it's, this is, if you pick one area, my experience is, and say, we really need some, a fix on this, uh, locally, uh, then it's a lot easier, easier to work with Department of College, if you're just, like, open the whole thing back up, you know, it will shut down for a long time. There won't be much progress.
So you're saying that's separate from, it's not under the comprehensive plan, it's a discrete piece?
It's, yeah, it's, it's.
And so if the planning commission wants to take this up, maybe do it ahead of this, they comprehensive plan.
Way, way in, uh, yeah, early on, yeah, yeah, just to clarify, it'd be great, as, as we put in the work plan, lay in on the dredging policies, uh, and kind of help kickstart the council's review of the overall S and P, and, and start that process for, for adoption sometime next year.
Can I ask, TJ, is there, there's a lot of community members at the civic club, civic club members are, represent a lot of community members. Uh, is there a vehicle to, to talk to each other, or like announcements, or just as another community outreach slash?
I mean, so there are newsletters that go out, but I actually couldn't tell you for sure who's on the board.
I am not a member, so I feel like our neighbor's a member, but.
Right, yeah, no, yeah, so I'm not, not quite sure, I've never actually attended a meeting of theirs.
No, but I wasn't sure if there was a really organized communication system among members.
It's gotta be a board, right?
There, well, so, so, so there is a board, and there's a newsletter that comes out, it's probably not quite monthly, maybe monthly over the summertime with activities, so, that, that would be how to do it, and certainly the website, I believe, has contact info, but I just don't have a particular contact for you. Took me quite a bit of effort to find anybody that knew anything about their actual dredging plans.
Oh. Um, good, so, uh, with that said, it sounds like we have our next meeting agenda, and, uh, can, can I, thank you? Can I get a?
Well, actually, before we do this, so what I'm hearing TJ, is that this is your last meeting.
With ninety percent confidence, I, I need.
It was eighty, ten minutes ago.
I know, I decided not to go up, I think it's, I think it's pretty, pretty clear, I'm holding off till I get this medical, physical qualification from Antarctica, there's a, there's a non-negligible chance that the entire Antarctic field season falls apart. Uh, and so I'm trying to hold off until I know, I was hoping it'd be sooner, so.
We acknowledge your contributions.
Would you not be here for a meeting if it were like the fifteenth? Could you not come unofficially, or you've already been gone?
November seventh is the day that I leave, if everything goes so well.
So, with that said, I think we would have to.
Alright.
So, well, Commissioner Fudge, it has been such a pleasure, and, um, I, yeah, I guess this is officially your last meeting minute. Uh, with great sadness, I just, um, will announce that, and I'm sure Patty and, um.
Okay, I'll make it official, I'll email them there, I was gonna say that, but, but when do you know? No, I think, actually, I think, I should just make the decision, let you guys transition to get somebody on sooner for the COP Plan, so that I don't have to jump up the speed. So, si- just, decision made.
Can we bug you, though, and, and, uh, and say you're like the official point of contact for the civic club?
I, sorry, that's not.
Public opinion, yeah.
So, well, thank you, guys, I've really enjoyed serving on the planning commission overall, and I feel like I'm leaving it in very capable hands to, to do this, I feel very good about the work you guys are gonna do on the COP Plan coming up.
TJ, I wanted to thank you in particular for the hours of hard work, and also, you know, it wasn't an easy process from the beginning on Town Center, and, uh, it got better, uh, towards the end, but it was, it was a slog, so, appreciate your sticking with it, you were with it from the beginning to the end, so, that was truly an accomplishment, how it ended up in a, in a good place.
Thank you, TJ. Probably we're gonna bring a keg at the next meeting. A keg.
That's right.
Um, with that said, can I, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
In a second? That's, thank you, all, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Is that next to you?
I would say the mayor is the only.